Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. At this time, we'll call the November 10th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting to order. I ask everybody to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Hearing none. We have a quorum with four people. And I believe we have a change to the agenda. We're going to remove PB 2016.
I'll make a motion to remove PB 2016 from tonight's agenda.
Okay.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Alright. Alright, agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the October 13th meeting minutes? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 13th, 2020.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Are there any items of old business? I don't believe so. So, new business? We have Agenda Item PB 1823, FosTrak Plan Development Residential Amendment Number Two, Connect Off-Site Wastewater Treatment Plant, Adjust Lot Lines and Roadway Alignments as Necessary to Accommodate the 500-Year Ranchland Ditch and Other Minor Changes for Property Located at Tax Map 15, Parcel 86, Moayok Township. And staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Whoever wants to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request you have before you tonight is an amendment, the Second Amendment to the FosTrak Plan Development Residential. The FosTrak right here is located between Eagle Creek and Ranchland, Eagle Creek Subdivision and Ranchland. You all considered this a couple of years ago with the first approval, and then there was followed by another amendment to this. It is zoned, PDR, like I said, it has an approval in place. It is in full service in the 2006 Land Use Plan. It is in limited service in the Moayok Small Area Plan. So, the applicant has come forward to make an amendment to this plan because of Plan Development Residential is really comprised of two big pieces of their approval. The master plan, which is the representation of what they want to do, and then also a Terms and Conditions document. Because those approvals are linked together, and that master plan is very much the, it's the physical representation of what they want to do, so if there's any changes, any major changes, they have to come before you for an amendment to that original approval. So they are requesting an approval. The big one is to, for the off-site wastewater connection to that off-site wastewater system. This was originally approved with some type of onsite state agency-approved engineered design onsite wastewater treatment. And so now the big request is to be allowed to connect to an off-site wastewater treatment There's also some changes with road alignments and lots due to the new or the revised dimensions of the ditch that's there between this development and ranch land. So this was the, what was amended, what was approved in November of last year. And I'm gonna zoom in, we're gonna have to zoom in because I know you can't really see what's exactly going on. And this is what they're asking for now. So what was gonna be potentially onsite wastewater treatment area right here now has the potential for disposal, treated effluent disposal area or groundwater area, they've labeled that, a parking lot right here, and this is the ditch along with the ranchland side that's going to be, to be able to get the capacity, it's gonna have to have larger dimensions, so that's gonna impact the lots along here and some along here. So, to give you a little bit of history, the original approval was done in May of 2019. The First Amendment was then approved in November of last year. So this request, this changes to the master plan to connect to off-site wastewater, off-site wastewater treatment, and to adjust those lot lines. There are some other minor changes would be the clubhouse area and some of the pond enlargement, there're gonna be regrouping of the multifamily units, and you can see those other things, and recreational equipment storage parking lot shown down near the, what was the wastewater treatment area. So we do have a little bit of concern if the plan, if these changes are approved and the off-site major, the off-site use permit for the major utility for the Eagle Creek facility, the plan would be for them to connect to the major, the Eagle Creek wastewater treatment plant. If that use permit is approved, for them to become a major utility and serve more than the Eagle Creek subdivision, then that would be a viable option for them to have their wastewater treated there at the Eagle Creek facility. If that use permit is denied, then they'll have to come up with another plan for treating their wastewater. So, there's a little bit of unknown here in that. We don't know, the board is gonna be considering it at their November 16th meeting, the use permit for that facility. In the Terms and Conditions document, this was the major thing that was added, was a paragraph G, was that wastewater is that the developer intends to connect to a major utility off-site owned by Currituck Water and Sewer LLC for wastewater treatment and disposal. A wastewater collection system will be connected by the developer and managed by the wastewater utility, and the utility will be regulated by the North Carolina Utilities Commission. So this language would replace the language about them having onsite wastewater treatment. So I did, right here, a little blow-up of the area. This was the 2019 November approved plan. So you see this area that's designated as wastewater treatment right here. And you can see the layout of the lot specifically. This one is the one that, these, this lot right here, this road alignment, and these, the lot configuration along here, these are all gonna be changing just a little bit, but with the construction of that ditch there, with the final dimensions to get it to where. So here, you see this area has now been designated as disposal of effluent treated wastewater or groundwater, the RV parking, the recreational vehicle parking. You see now, these lots are a little bit of different configuration along through here, especially these two lots here, these two lots here, which were just one lot, impact of lots along here, and along right in through here. There is a little bit of change up at the clubhouse. More parking is added there, and there's some grouping of the multifamily which is there. So, the 2006 Land Use Plan did classify this, does classify this as full service within the Moayok area, and the policy emphasis for the Moayok subarea is properly managing the increased level, urban level of growth that this area is sure to experience over the next decade and beyond. Where central sewer is proposed, additional services are available, and the character of the surrounding area supports it, a higher density ranging from three to four units per acre could be considered. The Board of Commissioners did find that this proposed plan was consistent with the following policy plan, was the HN1 that Currituck County shall encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for the location. In small area plan, the policy emphasis for the limited service is the land to be less intensely developed than the full service. Limited service designations provide limited availability to infrastructure and services though to moderate residential densities. Residential densities in this designation range between one and one and a half units per acre. However, the BOC found that this plan is, this proposed plan is consistent with the following policies. Policy FLU1 with future land use one promote compatibility between new development and existing development to avoid adverse impacts to the existing community. So, and these are noted in your staff report, there were some inconsistencies in their, the terms and conditions that the applicant presented, submitted, I'm sorry, that the applicant submitted, that the paragraph K had been added, and I think this is probably an oversight on applicant's part, that it seems to be that this was language left over from an earlier addition. Paragraph M has been amended by the removal of the last sentence. And then there are two Schedule As that were part of their terms and conditions. The first Schedule A that the applicant submitted, and you see this in your agenda packet, is not consistent with the final approval from the November 2019 approval. So, the Technical Review Committee does recommend approval of the amended Plan Development Residential rezoning with the following revisions, that the changes to the Terms and Conditions document not called out by the applicant must be addressed. These are the inconsistencies that I just went over with the different language. The soil and water comment was that there's a back of a rolling creek near the south of the property that must be cleared and snagged as soon as possible. From CAMA, a stormwater management of Roland Creek in areas downstream north and east of the railroad or within CAMA jurisdiction require 30-foot setback and CAMA permitting is required. Drainage and utility requirements in the June 24, 2019 approved order remain unchanged. So, and also that the use permit for the off-site wastewater treatment would need to be approved prior to, to any zoning change becoming effective. I went through that kinda quickly, so please ask any questions, or if there's more explanation for any of the...
I know that we took the drainage and easement text amendment off, but here on I, off-water, stormwater, the applicant, does the applicant have the easements secured for, you know, going through all these properties and the drainage and cleaning the ditches and everything? I mean, do they have to be?
That would be a question for the applicant's representative. We have been told that they had the majority of the easements, but that was several months ago, so that would be a question for the applicant.
I have a question, just to get some clarification. So, basically, there's just, there's two parts to this. One part has to do with the wastewater, and not, you know, the sewage, the sewage.
Yes.
The other has to do with storm drain, you know?
Yes.
There's a runoff from the lots and stuff. That's where you talk about the lot lines and the ditch and all that. That is the runoff from the lots, not, has nothing to do with sewage, though.
Has nothing to do, this is stormwater. So, in the original approval, there were several commitments, and I can get you all a map, I should be part of this presentation, but there were several commitments proposed by the applicant and accepted about different improvements that were gonna be made for the stormwater. One of those requirement, one of those offers was a significant ditch at the 500-year, 500-year storm level. And when it came to actually constructing that ditch to have that level, it was, and once again, let me, you know, the applicant is here for a further, more technical explanation, but I think it was much larger than what was originally proposed and impacted those lots along that ranchland side and that road configuration. So, you have the drainage ditch on one side of ranchland side, and then you have, the two biggest changes, I should say, that on one side, and then you have the connection to the off-site wastewater treatment plant, which would impact that land use designations on the other side of the plan. So, the ditch here?
We're not seeing a cursor.
Yeah, we can't see her.
So, you're, you're just, the square white part is what you're talking about? Where the sewer plant used to be?
Right there.
Ah.
Okay, so...
Big red dot now.
The big red dot. Okay, thank you, Donna.
Alarm that this afternoon.
Oh, you came to the tutorial, I did not. So this is the ranchland ditch right here, and I'm sorry that you guys couldn't see me earlier when I was just mousing. So, and this is, you can ask Mr. Bissell more technical questions about when, went to actually constructing this ditch impacted, how they had to label the slope back, the width, the different things, when the actual implementation of that commitment to the storm drain, to the drainage, impacted this road and these, the lot configuration. So...
So that's one of the changes we're talking about tonight?
That's one of the changes that we're talking about, is this ditch, the size of this, ultimately the size of this ditch impacted this road and the lot configuration.
And that's all stormwater issues?
That's all stormwater issues, yes.
Okay, not sewage issues?
Not sewage issues. Go back over here. So this is the 2019, the November 2019 approved plan. See this area right here on the master plan is designated as onsite wastewater treatment. With the potential now to, if the use permit is approved for the Eagle Creek facility to become a major utility, serve and serve more than just Eagle Creek, if that use permit is approved, they will have the option to be able to connect to off-site wastewater treatment plant. So, that area has now been designated as a potential disposal area for treated wastewater effluent or groundwater, depending on if groundwater lowering is needed, and also recreation vehicle parking area right here. There are also some minor changes around the clubhouse. And like I said, these are the major, these are the major changes, there's a little bit, some other minor changes as well. But you see, parking was added, maybe some shifts in the clubhouse area, but those are the major ones. Wastewater, stormwater. So, and I apologize that I didn't know you guys couldn't see my mouse earlier.
We had a good idea what you were talking about, but we weren't sure where the, which row of trees the ditch was.
When, in part of your presentation, you brought up the Land Use Plan, specifically policies HN1, NH1, and then you brought up the Moayok Small Area Plan, policies FLU1, CC1. Can you, can you go over what, what are those exact, you know, especially the Moayok Small Area Plan?
Okay, I can do that. How, so, as a CAMA county, I'll give you a very brief, but just general, okay. As a CAMA county, we are required to have a land use plan to address CAMA issues along with other developments. We have had some type of guiding document for years. The 2006 Land Use Plan is the most recent adopted land use plan we have, and I'm probably telling you more than you want to know, but after that was adopted, and probably a couple years after that, when the citizens of Moayok started seeing a lot more development, they asked, or they expressed their opinions to the Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Commissioners commissioned a small area plan. So that, to address very specific, Moayok-specific issues.
Okay, so the land use plan is more general overall county?
More general.
They saw a need, so they drilled it down?
Drilled down.
To the Moayok Small Area Plan. Okay, let's talk about the Moayok Small Area Plan.
Okay.
What, just generally, what does that say? What is that exactly?
What is that? Well...
Standards and the language and...
Well, it gave some various...
...of that.
Well, I could bring up lots of things, lots of maps and different things, but when it came down to it, and Donna, please elaborate on things where I'm short and jump in where I kinda go off course, but the Moayok Small Area Plan, really, a lot of things came out of that, and it was the fact that the citizens wanted to keep more of the development further north. They wanted to have an employment center, and that area was generally around where we have Currituck Station designated now. They wanted to do some economic development, had some economic development policies really geared toward leveraging the houses, the residents that were getting into, in the Moayok to be able to then get some commercial development. Issues about compatibility between neighborhoods that were coming in and existing development.
What issues on density?
Issues on density. So, the Moayok Small Area Plan, you can see right here, the full service area came down to just adjacent to the FosTrak. The Moayok Small Area Plan had density in limited service at one to one and a half units per acre. In full service, it was three units per acre. So, but, in the full service area of the land use plan, you see all of the, you see the orange here designated all of this as full service area. So they could, by the 2006 Land Use Plan, go up to three units per acre. Moayok Small Area Plan, one and a half units per acre.
Okay, so the standards for, under the Moayok, Moayok Small Area Plan, what was the density per acre that was, you just talked about, one and a half units?
One and a half units.
And that's what, it was specified in that?
It was specified in that.
Okay. Now, let me, and just, just let me ask you this, what, just so I'll know, this development, what is the ratio per acre?
I think, I'm gonna say it's like, two and a half?
Per acre?
Per acre.
Well, Mr. Bissell might be able to answer that when he comes up here.
But, this has received an approval at that density. If you give me just a second, I can...
I believe it's 2.1.
2.1?
Mm-hmm.
But if this, Lori, if this gets defined as a utility, major utility, correct?
Is the, if the Eagle Creek, now, it's not on this property, if the Eagle Creek wastewater treatment gets the approval to become a major utility and serve off-site?
Right, then future density can be, you can have much more denser and denser development in Moayok?
Potentially. Now, at the end of the day, there is, you know, zoning control for that as well, but another control of density would be sewer, availability of sewer.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Did the small area plan come out of the Imagine Currituck?
No, it did not. It came out of, Imagine Currituck is still in draft form, and that, it began in, I wanna say 2012, Donna?
Imagine Currituck?
No. The Moayok Small Area Plan, 2012. Yeah, and probably approved in 2013, if I had to, 14, yeah, 2013 or 14. But it came out of, well, I mean, there was...
There was a lot of community meetings.
There was a lot of community meetings, and there was a lot of concern from the Moayok area that, that the full service area, kind of, there was, there was a lot of full service area, and at the rate of growth, I think that the rate of growth they were seeing and just the change in their community. I mean, were you, were you part of that, Ms. Kraus?
I, I went to a couple of the meetings, well, you know what, I went to a lot of the Imagine Currituck, I'm not sure I participated very much in the small area plan.
So, um... It was, it was a day or two ago. And is there anything that you would want to add, Donna, about the small area process, or what came out of it that I represent that well?
Density's, I think, were your main question.
Yeah, that was, that's what I wanted to focus on, yeah. Thanks.
Does, does Plan Development zoning require a sewer system of some kind? I guess my question is, you can't have septic tanks at every house in a Plan Development? The zoning Plan Development. Does it require every central sewer, whether it be onsite, offsite?
I believe it did, I thought it said...
And tertiary treatment of the effluent coming out of the system.
I kinda thought there was something like that.
It's really about the treatment of the waste coming out of the system. And how much? Through the density shifts.
Big a piece of property, or how small? Where, what, do septic tanks work?
Yes, I mean, do septic...
You can put, in a subdivision, you can put septic tanks in. What size, I mean, half an acre?
It's got a perk, though.
It's got a perk. If it doesn't perk, you're limited.
It depends on the drain field.
It depends on each lot would, would kinda be tested on its own to see how much water seeks in.
I assume it has to be a relatively larger, I mean, a larger lot than...
Kinda depends on how big a house you're building, that sort of thing.
The drain fields and stuff. But they have engineered septic tanks now, and grinders and all this stuff that just pushes it more and more out, so it evaporates and stuff, but, yeah. so it evaporates and stuff, but, yeah.
But in a subdivision like this, you can't have those, so it all has to be some kind of central system.
I'm just wondering on the, the size of the piece of property that you'd have to-
Because the lots are tiny, small, and if the land doesn't perk, you're, you have to go-
Septic systems generally have to do with your soil suitability. And what you see in the Moayoc area, the, the lot sizes range anywhere from about 20,000 to, right around 20,000 to about 25,000. Depending on the configuration of the lot, like if you're in a cul-de-sac, you might need a larger lot for your system.
I, I have a couple of questions about the drainage improvements. I'm not sure who can answer those, but, um, there's a lot of off-site, will this, all the off-site stormwater, will this be done right away? Or is this doing in conjunction with how construction moves? Again, I had, you know, questions about the easements. And I see number five, developer or management associations shall contribute 5,000 annually. And what is that to cover? Is that to cover any off-site improvements? Or is that to cover in, you know, the, just the surrounding area? So these, that's a couple of my questions.
And I'd have to go back and read all of those, those terms and conditions, but I think those were specifically for, if the developer was unable to get entrance into any of these properties where, um, let's see. In your packet, in the staff report, page 7 of 7, in the staff report part of your packet, and I don't, sorry, I don't have that packet page in front of me. But you see a map of the drainage commitments. They were part of the, the approval for this, there's a map with, with bubbles that would call out, call out, um, bubbles where you can see all the commitments that were part of the zoning approval.
And I guess that's not really part of what we're talking about tonight anyways.
No, but that would be, you know, if you want to know, the applicant representative is here, and that would be something.
You're talking about changes to that ditch, that, that you're not talking about, so. That's the part about the 500-year ranchland ditch, they're making it bigger. All right. Anything else? Anybody? All right. Are you, you good or ready to move on, or?
I'm, I'm, I'm good. If, if you all are, have any more questions for me, I'm, I'm here.
All right. Nobody at the moment, so. Applicant, Mr. Bissell, is that you?
That is.
Well, come on down.
Chairman? Trying to answer as many of the questions as I possibly can. As you may recall, we had initially proposed two alternatives with this project. When we first came before the, the first bit of the application, we proposed both on an off-site alternative to the wastewater. And I believe it was the county attorney that advised us that we would have to choose one or the other. The county would be able to consider both alternatives in the PDR approval that we were seeking. Off-site alternative was not viable at that point. We chose the onsite, so we're coming back now, but it appears that an onsite option may be viable. The PDR ordinance does require, it did require, doesn't exist anymore, but it did require our central wastewater treatment to be provided, one way or another. What we're proposing tonight doesn't change the density. I've heard discussion about whether the provision or the approval of a regional utility changes the density that's allowed. And if it's not, it's a separate process. The county commissioners through a zoning revision can change the density of any property that might be available to be served in that facility. Each project can have its own wastewater system. In fact, we proposed one here, we proposed one for more. Just about every major project we propose has its own wastewater treatment and disposal facility that is located on that site. So you have more efficiency from an operational standpoint and the cost for the customer standpoint by having one larger facility rather than multiple smaller facilities. Paying utility that serves multiple projects doesn't increase density, it does provide operation. The operation in the background, because then you also have multiple disposal options. As Mr. Cicero said, where the wastewater treatment plant was before on this project, we're still proposing to leave, to reserve that for disposal of either effluent or groundwater from the central wastewater area. With regard to the drainage, when the county asked, and we agreed to accept the 500-year capacity ditch, it wasn't until we did the detailed modeling and the detailed design that we fully understood what that was going to entail. Because in order to get that amount of water to flow through that ditch from the back of this project adjacent to ranchland into Roland Creek, we had a ditch that was up to 80 feet wide. So we could have anticipated an 80-foot-wide ditch being necessary to accommodate that flood. So that, we paid that commitment, so now we're discussing the development plan around it. In answer to your question, the easements or the right-of-access agreements are all in place for all drainage improvements. In fact, those improvements will be completed by the completion of the civil defined plan of the first phase. Our business clubhouse. We are, and this may or may not have been something that we needed to ask approval for in terms of reconfiguring that site. We hadn't actually submitted a detailed site plan, but what this actually does is it allows us to construct a bigger pond there. Make that, uh, pond wider than it should.
This is probably the best one?
Yeah, that's a good one.
Back to what it was?
Sure.
This is, this is what was approved, um, this Bissell's, whoop, he's talking about this pond. Right here, next to the clubhouse. That was the November 2019 approval, and this is what they're proposing now with this pond.
Now you can see that the clubhouse and parking has been slid to the, to the northwest there, which provides a much bigger pond, which is going to be more stormwater storage and so forth on the side. A pond here also, now we're going to round about.
That's going to be a large ditch. What's the safety precautions that, you know, for kids getting into the ditch and playing in the ditch? I mean, is there anything, is there a fence, or, which you can't put a fence because you got to go in and work it? Is it, I guess it's more wide than deep?
It is.
Okay.
Three to one slopes, and, and in fact, you know, the Roland Creek ditch, for now, it also offered to improve, it has slopes that are almost vertical now in a lot of places. And we could create a widen the bottom of it, a layback of the slope to a three to one, a widened it. So we had actually also accommodated a much wider top width for that in addition to providing 50 foot easements on each side of the cliff.
What's your assurance that this is going to be maintained?
Well, the other question you had asked was about the $5,000 a year. That is strictly for onsite improvements. The onsite improvements are covered by a separate budget determined by a professional property management company. Association leaders will be set up before the onsite. Additionally, onsite, the developers committing the onsite.
For the off-site improvements that are being mentioned here, will they actually be included as to each ditch? Will that be named, or will you just be maintaining the Roland Creek? The off-site improvements currently, right now, it states, clear and snag Roland Creek from 168 to Roland Creek Estate subdivision. Clear and snag the ranchland outlet ditches from the property south. So that's a one-time thing that you're going to clear and snag those?
Well, the Roland Creek part that runs across this property will become part of this association's responsibility.
Okay. Improve survey road ditch to, from Guinea Road to the railroad? So my question is, the off-site improvements, it looks like the developer plans to put $5,000 a year in a escrow account or something like that? And that will be managed by the association?
Probably would be managed by the association, and you can actually look it up.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, is, you know-
Who are the easements?
Someone to determine when the ditches are going to be cleared and maintained at a-
There's also going to be an actual stormwater management association set up.
Okay.
With the, the easements down the edge of the ditch, who are they being dedicated to? But on the maintenance question she has, who are the easements being dedicated to? So, who can mow down the edge of the ditch and that sort of thing? I'm assuming that's what they're for?
Well, no, they are permanent easements.
They are, or they aren't?
They're not.
They're not?
You know, the way that the county has done it in the past, they've just gone and asked people if it's okay to do it. And them white dogs who did that for years and years. Is it okay, or not okay, initially? We obtain permission to do it one time.
That's what I'm trying to, because once the development's up and once all the houses are there, there has to be a maintenance of the ditch system because you no longer have the farmer doing it. So that, that's my concern, is, you know, within a year, those trees can come back and-
What's this system, are you asking about?
The off-site ditches, because the onsite, obviously, I think that-
That'll get maintained by the association.
Will be maintained by the association, the offsites, which-
The off-site ditches in a lot of cases probably haven't been maintained in 30 years. Bringing back to where they were 30 years ago.
There'll be another 30 years before they get to.
But the, I mean, the relationite is going to be there, and the used to.
But without easements, the county won't go back on that property without easements?
Yeah, well, I don't know, but we've done it in the past. People don't want a grant easement, so developers do.
The temporary easement is if there's a drainage problem that's causing flooding in the roads or something like that, then, then there's some flexibility as to getting equipment in there and cleaning it up. I've got a question, because I, I mean, the drainage, I don't, I, I'm fine with all that. That just, you know, seems, my question, though, is on the wastewater system. The original, what I'm going to say, site plan, and that, you know, and that might not be the exact terminology, but the original site plan that was presented had a, a system that was contained within the subdivision. The request now is to add in a, add, get rid of that and tie into another system that's in place in Eagle Creek. And, and by doing that, what happens is, and this will come before the commissioners, then it becomes a major utility. Correct? And, once that occurs, and again, this is coming out of the, the planning session, and Donna, you can tell me if I'm wrong, you know, then it allows for future denser development. Is, is that correct?
There's no change in the development density that's changed.
Right, but I'm talking, not, I'm not talking specific to this case. I'm looking down the road. I'm not, yeah, I'm not, not dealing with specifics to this case, but I'm looking down the road. That, that seems to be a narrative that's out there that I want to make sure I'm clear on.
What is, but there's no cause and effect, direct cause and effect relationship between the time of Eagle Creek and mechanic commissioners allowing some other property to have higher density. What it does is provide-
It's not, it's-
Free customers with some relief to not carry the whole burden of operating and maintaining.
Well, it's not the, it's not the cause and effect that I'm concerned with. The concern I have is that there's a different designation now. That, you know, a public, a major utility has a different designation once this occurs. And that's, that's, that's just my concern. And that's the reason I specifically ask about the Moayoc small area plan. Because they dealt with density within that small area plan. And with one and a half units per acre, this development, as it stands now, is at 2.1 units per acre, which is denser than, than the small area plan said. And, and again, I can't-
But way less dense than the land use plan, which is what-
Right.
The PDR ordinance requires-
Right, right, but it came out, it's my understanding that the small area plan came out at a later date than the land use plan did.
Yes.
Okay.
The land use plan was 2006, the Moayoc small area plan.
12?
2012, it began in 2014, it was adopted.
Okay. And the company?
So the, so the land use plan, or the Moayoc small area plan, if it does go on adjacent property, then if this property did have density presumably further, whether it's being a wastewater utility or not.
Right, and let me ask you this, the company that's going to be managing the facility, what, what is the name of that company that, at this time?
The, will be owned by an entity called, named Currytuck Water and Sewer.
Okay.
Which is LLC that was formed for the purpose of operating wastewater plants. It's operated by EnviroLink.
They, they, okay.
Which is a professional, which, which is what they do, operate water and wastewater system. The company that has been working with Currytuck County to solve problems.
And that is the company in Eagle, Eagle Creek, correct?
And it's also worked to solve the problems in Eagle Creek.
Okay, so EnviroLink is, is really the company that operates, the, kind of like if you own a store and somebody else runs it. Somebody owns the building and somebody else gets out there and runs it, okay. And they're, they, they've been around how, I mean, are they, they've been in Eagle Creek a long time?
They've been around for a long time. They've been around for a long time.
Okay.
They operate facilities all over their state and other states.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask a really dumb question. If I were a resident in Eagle Creek and I see more getting put on to a system I have, how do I feel that it's, how's it, how does it improve, how does it improve the problems that occurred that we heard about recently with, with Eagle Creek? So I'm a homeowner and I want to know, you know, how, how's that improved? Does it improve or should I be concerned?
Well, right now, you have 427 customers on the customer. And that number is fixed and will not increase. But that customer base, through the rate structure, it's reg, you know, and of course it's overseen and regulated by the utilities commission, but ultimately those 400 employees, some customers pay for the cost of the improvements in the facility. If you double the number of customers, then you have twice the customer base contributing to the cost of the improvements, which serves to keep the, the rate base and keep the...
You've got economies of scale and it's, it's, it's...
It's a huge economy scale.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So more affordability on repair, like maintenance, repair?
Yeah, plus you're going to have a company that is in the business of operating wastewater systems rather than what Eagle Creek has now, which is a developer and utility system. Developer and utility system by nature. Typically, the bare minimum, you know, capital put in and you can keep them up.
So what's...
Whereas a water and sewer company has been satisfied by the utilities commission to find the making improvements and seek to do the initiatives. Pickler facility and they're talking about making investment on the, on the, on the model. They will not be doing it if it's going to become a... Fair for sure. And the, just the developers, kind of the utility will remain.
So how many gallons right now is that system taken care of and what, how far capacity, what's the capacity that it can go to or they're looking to treat with gallons?
Well, what's in place, there are different components of that facility that have, that have different ratings. The, the kind of guts of, I need to say, of the plant itself can handle 350,000 gallons a day. Typically, the Eagle Creek has been using about 60,000 gallons a day. I've heard, and I haven't seen it before, but I've heard that's gone up some since COVID when more people are working from home. Maybe 70,000 to 80,000, but it's... Just in a quarter of the facilities, about 20% of the facilities take ultimate capability. So of course irrigation system, I believe, was raised, and these are numbers from memory, but I should hold it. I believe it was around 321,000 gallons a day. Irritation that's in place right now can handle about 175,000 gallons a day, but it can be increased, taken to double through the addition of a lower plant. But it's got...
So it's got...
It's operating at a very low capacity compared to the...
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering.
But what we don't want is for, you know, some point that the golf course or some saturations while we're providing, you know, multiple disposal options or like, like that.
Does that, does, another dumb question. Does any of this water ever make it to the ditches? And is it, um...
It does in the form of groundwater.
Okay.
What happens is the water goes up to the golf course or there's also an infiltration pond that's, that's some of the differences. But ultimately, the ditches that surround the property is draining the property. So they keep that, that groundwater level down and track to that, you know, on station there, maybe for maybe, there's actually a groundwater pump station that's located on Eagle Creek Canal.
I do know.
South end of Eagle Creek. And partly to that, not to demand a stormwater, but actually demand groundwater to keep that water level down.
Will the school be on that system as well? The, the middle school?
The middle school is on the...
It is currently on the system. And then there's another subdivision, Ryan Homes subdivision. Is that also?
That is not on the county.
It's county, so...
That's on the count, on the county. Okay.
Anybody? You, one, we're talking about connecting off-site wastewater treatment plant. And it, and this hinges on whether the commissioners approve it as a utility in Eagle Creek.
We would not actually move this request to the commissioners until they make a decision on that.
Okay. All right. So that'll, it'll follow that at the commissioners. And then you say adjust lot lines and the lots that Lori pointed out earlier that butt up against the ditch. There's those, is that what you're talking about?
Right. So that's just a reconfiguration. It's not a change in the...
Not change the numbers. You just changed the way they're shaped.
I want to go back to your stormwater management plan. You said that there's, there's actually going to be a stormwater management separate from the homeowners.
I have a budget, which is in addition to that, budget for maintaining everything.
So couldn't it be like a, like the Guinea Mill, um...
No, because that's a, that's a county tax funded system. It's only, it's only a tax, although...
So...
After the county at some point wanted to form a Roland Creek tax district and... Paying energy behind doing something like that.
So the only people that will be putting money into that would be that, this, the false subdivision? That's it? And that will be in the homeowners' association? I mean, I, I just don't want to see, see it go away. So in, you know, in five years, 10 years, it just goes away and the ditches don't get that maintenance that they need. My concern is maintenance. More than anything is maintenance because we know that without that, that's where we see a lot of the flooding in these neighborhoods. Um, I think that's my, my biggest concern is, is to make sure that, you know, this is something that you say that you're going to do, but where are the teeth to keep you doing that?
It'll be part of the association document search and find a flat station.
You've got laying the ditch back, making that bigger. And then other minor changes? What are the other minor changes?
The boot and RV parking area that are shitting on there was, was actually part of the preliminary flat, but we never actually shitting on the approved master plan. So we painted that up and turned it on and made it now.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Bussell that you can think of? All right. Uh, find my place. All right. Well, I don't think anybody has any more questions, Sue. We'll, we'll call you back if we need you. All right. I'll now open the floor for public comment. If we have anybody that wants to speak.
I would like to, but it's not related to this project. So you can push me to the end of your discussion.
Sure will. All right. Don't let me forget it at the end now. I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or discussions?
I'd like to make sure that we include some sort of wording for stormwater management off-site improvement to make sure that this is condition that stays with it.
Farther down creek and Roland Creek. Ms. Stahl, anything?
No.
Brian, you good?
I'm good.
All right. Hearing, hearing done. I'll open the floor for a motion.
I suggest a motion for approval. I move to approve PB 1823, false plan development amended because and include, to include stormwater management for off-site improvement to follow with the, the, the developer promising to keep that. So that is part of that condition. And I move to approve it. It is consistent with all the review standards provided under the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, Section 2.4.3.3(c), Board of Commissioners 624, 2019. The conditions placed on the development will improve drainage problems on the property within nearby ranchland and Eagle Creek subdivisions. If improvements are made to the drainage system offshore properties, I say will be made to the off-site properties to include stormwater management further, further on.
Downstream?
Downstream. It is compatible with the existing Moyoc township subdivision, Board of Commissioners 624, 2019. The drainage and utility requirements in the June 4th, 2019 approved order remain unchanged. And it is, the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it required by change, conditions acknowledged by the land use plan and addresses and demonstrates community need, providing full service area that offers mixed-use development with both residential and commercial components, Board of Commissioners 624, 2019.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Would you like to address any of the outstanding TRC?
Is there anything specific you've...
Well, the, the changes to the terms and conditions document that were not called out by the applicant?
Okay. I, I can, I can, you want me to include that?
If, yes.
Also, part of the TRC Planning Board recommendation, the commit, the committee recommends approval of the amendment plan development residential rezoning with the following condition revisions. Changes to the term and condition document not called out by the applicant must be addressed planning. There is a backup in Roland Creek near the south of the property that must be cleared and snagged as soon as possible, soil and stormwater. Stormwater management on Roland Creek and the areas downstream, north and east of the railroad track are within KAMA jurisdiction, require a 30-foot setback and a KAMA permitting is required. Drainage and utility requirements in the June 24th, 2019 approved order remain unchanged.
Thank you.
All right. We have the new motion? Do we have a second? I will, I'll second motion. All in favor? We have a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And I don't know really where that leaves us. Is that a... What's a tie?
Robert rules of order. Unless we have something different in our rules of procedure, a tie vote is a denial.
Okay. All right. We have two-two that gives us a tie and I believe that is a denial of the motion. Does anybody else want to make a different motion? So I don't know that we can leave it one way or the other. So...
Denial.
It'll still go to the board of commissioners and...
Yes, it'll still go to the board of commissioners with the, your recommendation is, we would present it as a tie.
As a tie.
As a tie.
Okay. All right. Then that's what we got. Presented to the commissioners as a tie. All right. The 20, PB 2016 is the one we removed, right?
Yes. The drainage, a little explanation behind that. We were able to meet with the county engineer today. I meet so much with county attorney and it almost came out county attorney. Met with the county engineer today and the county manager to make sure the language we were presenting tonight is, did indeed do what we wanted it to do. We need to revisit that and edit that language. So instead of bringing something to you last minute, we requested that it be taken off the agenda.
So we'll look for that in the future?
Yes.
All right. Onto PB 2017. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Use Standards to Correct Agriculture Support and Services, Wind Energy... Agriculture Support and Services Wind Energy Facility Large and Outdoor Tour Operators. Aviation in Table 411B Summary Use Table for the Planned Development Zoning Districts as previously adopted by the Board of Commissioners. All right.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request before you tonight, as you mentioned, was, is an application submitted by the county to correct the summary use table specifically for planned development zoning districts, and it directly relates to three items. One is the distribution hub for agricultural products, large wind energy facilities, and aviation outdoor tour operators. The, I'm gonna go forward one more. I'm sorry for the very small print, but.
That's all right. I think we have them in here.
It is in your, in your staff report. This summary use table was an item that was added. It was new with the Currituck Station request, and what it did is it actually separated the summary use table of all uses, and it pulled out the planned developments to give room for each one of the sub-districts in Currituck Station. That was adopted June 15, 2020. But unfortunately, what that new table did is it didn't include some of the updated language that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners during the time that the Currituck Station text amendment was drafted, considered, and ultimately adopted. And the three text amendments that were affected by this directly to the planned developments, because that's the only one that was completely new language, these three items had to do with PB 1926, the Nutrient Ag Solutions that was adopted December 2, 2019, and what it did is it added the agronomic use as a permitted use in the distribution hub for agricultural products. That was added as the first line. It puts back in language for agronomic uses.
I don't want to sound stupid, but what does agronomic mean?
I don't remember exactly what it was, but they, they have an existing operation in the county at Sinshawboro.
I remember this was.
And it was like they did soil conditioner, those not immediately, it wasn't like seed, it wasn't like directly farm-related, but it was other.
For supply, in the supply chain for farmers, basically.
Yes.
And I apologize for not giving, providing you an exact definition of that, but.
That's okay.
What it did is it just added that into the use classification. Didn't change the districts at all, it just added that term in the use classifications. The second one was PB 17-24, which is a Currituck County request. It was adopted January the 22, 2019, and what it did is it removed large wind energy facilities as a permitted use across the board. And that is showing up on this as a strike through in the two districts under utilities.
So those are still going to stay removed?
They'll stay removed, correct. PB 19-09 was Bruce Weaver. He brought forward a text amendment for Kitty Hawk Kites. That was adopted June 3, 2019, that added aviation, outdoor tour operator. Previously, we just had outdoor tour operator, so it added in an aviation option as identified on the last item. This text amendment is a legislative decision that's before you tonight, and it requires the adoption of a written statement of consistency as well as reasonableness. And each one of those three text amendments included that very language that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners and is provided in your staff report tonight. And I'll try to summarize each one of these policies for the reasonableness and consistency statement. Summarize them so that we can enter them into the record. But this request is consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan Policy ED1, and this is for new and expanding industries and businesses, that they should be especially encouraged where they diversify the local economy, train and utilize a more highly skilled labor force, are compatible with the environmental quality and natural amenity-based economy of the county. That involves two of the requests. That was PB 19-26 Nutrient Ag Solutions and PB 1909 Bruce Weaver Kitty Hawk Kites. Policy ED4, and this has to do with small business startups and expansions that are recognized or in their recruitment and expansion of these major industries. That was included in Bruce Weaver's request for Kitty Hawk Kites, PB 1909. Policy ID5, which is warehousing, storage, and distribution facilities to have access to thoroughfares and adequate traffic carrying capacity that are appropriately designed and are visually buffered in accordance with the visibility of their location. That was covered under PB 1926 Nutrient Ag Solutions. Then a statement for PB 17-14 for Currituck County. It removes the potential conflict between the wind energy facilities and the operation of a nearby naval annex. Policy AG4, the county growth management tools, including particular zoning, should provide protection to agricultural and other resource-based activities from incompatible land uses such as residential subdivisions in the midst of generally uninterrupted farmland. That was covered under PB 1909, which was Bruce Weaver's request. This text amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because this text amendment replaces previously adopted language by the Board of Commissioners. That is existing and necessary support service for agriculture covered under PB 19-26 Nutrient Ag Solutions. It may help farm culture and promote farm and other open space conservation through diversifying low-impact uses of agricultural land, PB 1909 Bruce Weaver's Kitty Hawk Kites request. And it provides economic diversification and local economic development, which is also Bruce Weaver's request, PB 1909. It removes the potential conflict between the wind energy facilities and the operation of an existing naval annex, and that was PB 17-14. Staff does recommend approval of this request since it is, was previously adopted language, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody?
During Ms. Volva's presentation, I was able to look up agronomic products, since that has piqued our interest. Agronomic products include, but are not limited to, seeds, fertilizer, and soil and plant amendments. So those are the things that.
Pretty broad.
Pretty broad, pretty broad.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. Anybody else have anything? All right. Nobody here to speak on this? Ma'am, were you here to speak about agronomics?
No.
Okay. Just checking. All right. Open and close the public hearing. Any other questions? We'll open the floor for a motion.
A motion for approval of PB 2017 because it is, because it is consistent with the following policies of the 2006 Land Use Plan Policy ED1, ED4, Policy ID5, Policy AG4. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed text amendment replaces language previously adopted by the Board of Commissioners, is an existing and necessary support service for agricultural, PB 1926 Nutrient AG Solutions adopted December 2, 2019, may help preserve farm culture and promote the farm and open space conservation through diversifying low-impact uses of agricultural land, PB 19-09 Bruce Weaver Kitty Hawk Kites adopted June 3. Provides economic diversification and local economic development, PB 1909 Bruce Weaver Kitty Hawk Kites, June 3, 2019. Removes potential conflict between wind energy facilities and the operation of an existing naval annex, PB 1714.
All right, we have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I did text, or did, sorry, I reached out to the county attorney just to verify. A tie vote, if the vote is tied, the motion fails. So not quite a denial, so you have, and I don't know if that would have influenced anybody to make an alternate motion, and I'm sorry I didn't get that to you.
Well, in the rules of procedure, it says if a motion to approve a request receives a tie vote, then the motion fails as it did not receive the majority of the votes and the request is denied. Likewise, if a motion to deny a request receives a tie vote, then the request is denied as if it did not receive approval by the majority vote.
Was it necessary for us to make a motion to deny the request that was in front of us tonight? Not really.
Probably had the same outcome.
If you would probably had the same outcome, I would have said no. If it was, let's say we had more members here, and it was for, the motion failed, you know, say the vote was two to four to approve, and it fails that way, the cleaner way to do it would be then to make a motion to deny. However, our, our, the way that we have conducted business in the past is that that motion would have failed and it had been a denial. However, things have come up to light lately that maybe a cleaner way to do things is the best way forward.
Well, I think in our situation, either way, it's going to the Commissioners. Maybe a little more important for them, because there's nobody after them, so.
Exactly, and that's.
Buck on it tonight, so. All right, thank you. The lady behind you wanted to say something. Do you want me to wait till announcements or let her come up now? Come on up now. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lisa Ray. I'm at 1011 Rainy Road in Powell's Point. The reason I'm here, unfortunately, it's not on your agenda, it's the Gallup Sand Mine. I was told by Soil and Water Conservation that meeting was today. It was going to be a Zoom meeting, and then the manager's office told me it was a public meeting at 7:00. I called Larry Lombardi, he's in there, meeting's at 6:00. So here I am, and it's not that I jumped up. But while I'm here, I wanted just to let you know where I'm at with that, because silence is deafening, and I have not been communicating.
Okay. I just want to say, you probably need to communicate with these two ladies here a little more. We will not probably be hearing anything about a sand pit because it's going to be a special use permit, and this board doesn't hear special use permits. But you're welcome to tell us your concerns, because they're here and they'll, they'll hear what you're saying.
Yeah, that's fine, just the bottom line. The tower has three legs, and of each leg there's two anchor points. This is a special tower whereby it has two leases. One-third of that tower is on the Gallup property, and it's under a federal permit, it's not a state permit. So the federal permits are going to be the ones that determine what you can and can't do with the tower all the time. The proposal that I saw online today, this morning, was that you're planning that right up to 150 feet of the anchor points. Comments that would tell me erosion would cause failure of the tower. Maybe that's part of the plan.
Well, they're not planning anything. They will be reviewing it, but some other applicant has submitted those plans, but.
I'm responsible for that tower as well as everybody else, and there's several other things. There is drainage across my property that no one has contacted me on. There are names of property owners on my property that are not connected to me and never have been, and I have no knowledge of, an LFC. I have, I see Ms. Parker regularly. We talk to each other every couple weeks. There has been no disclosure at all this month. In fact, in September, she said to me that her grandson wanted a small pond in his backyard, a pond that's far from the Sand Mine.
It sounds like these are probably concerns you need to bring up at the Commissioners' meeting when this gets there.
If I can find out when these meetings are approached.
Was there some meeting today she missed on this?
Well, that's what I was going to say.
Wasn't this one, I know that, but.
The Gallup Sand Mine was considered today at staff through the Technical Review Committee. We went over several concerns about the mine. If, we will give those concerns to the applicant.
Sure.
If they can address those in a timely manner, I believe this use permit may be heard at the, is, like I said, if they can address these in a timely manner, will be heard at the first, second, January.
I think they said the first, because it would generally, if they could address all the comments, it would be heard at the second meeting in December.
I should be notified.
You, if you are within 500 feet of the property.
Be sure that they have a good contact for you, for your notification.
I'll get you my card, I'll give you my card, and call me, we're closed tomorrow. Call me Thursday, and we can discuss your concerns, process, where it goes from here, whatever documents you might want to present to the Board of Commissioners.
It won't be just my concerns, it's federal tower, and they have been notified today by me.
Perfect.
So there will be engineering studies that would be required to go to work.
We are recommending that as well.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Any announcements by anybody tonight?
I'll just mention that tomorrow's Veterans Day, and I would just like to say thank you to all of our veterans who served.
All right, well, thank you. One here. All right. Anything else? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned.